All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of Lewisburg Area Board of School Directors. Full rise of the flag. Mr. Heath is excuse this evening, and the board met an executive session for about thirty minutes. Uh, we're going to the meeting because it's discussion matters. At this time, we'd like to welcome our student representative, Erin Sanders. Is that okay timing?
Student Council. Okay, give them any of student council.
Oh, okay. Oh, you have comments? Are there citizens' comments to the board? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Well, actually, I'm flopping around then. We will do citizens' comments to the board on agenda items first, and then Gibson, you can come up to me with a report. I followed, I just didn't see it.
Sorry, is it on agenda?
On agenda.
Yeah, if you speak at the beginning, it has to be on agenda items. If you want to speak about something else, it's at the end when we do comments on non-agenda items.
Okay, mine's not.
Okay. We will proceed.
All right. Well, thank you guys so much. Um, I'm Gibson O'Mealy. Uh, I've been before you guys a couple of times, but I'm a junior. I was elected, uh, Student Council Vice President last year, um, and so this year we got started, and I wanted to update you guys a bit on homecoming, which, as you guys I'm sure are aware, is this week. So we have been doing our spirit dates, which we approved via the council. Uh, so on Monday, well, I'll start with today. So for today, we did a celebrity and characters day. Uh, on Tuesday, we did, um, twin day, and then on Monday, what was Monday?
Drama day.
Well, drama day, that's right, that's right. So, uh, you could roll out of bed in your pajamas and just go right into school, which we thought would be great. A lot of them are repeats of what we did last year, uh, and the years before, but we decided to bring them back, uh, with a couple of additions. Um, and then on, uh, Thursday tomorrow, we have, uh, dress up in your class shirts. And on Friday, we have green and white day, and then on Saturday is the actual dance. Uh, today, I'm not sure if you guys know, but we had, uh, PM flex, and we did a big, like, it was supposed to be outdoor games, but we had to do them inside because of the weather conditions. Uh, and so we set up around the school. The seniors had their tailgating, which was very successful. You can't smell it anymore, but the smell of barbecue and maybe some burned food was in the hallways a little bit today, but I think it left, um. So yeah, it's been going great so far. We've made, I believe, over seven hundred dollars in ticket sales so far. Uh, we have a couple hundred tickets sold. I want to say probably around the two hundred range now, but most students will end up buying them, uh, on, uh, Friday, right before, which I will also be doing because I forgot as well. Uh, so yeah, that's how it's been going so far. The dance is, uh, Saturday, seven to ten. Uh, we are doing, uh, setup in the morning, nine to eleven, and then we're doing cleanup right after. So yeah, it's been going great. So thank you guys so much for the support you've been giving us. Uh, we look forward to more updates. Thank you.
All right. Next up, Hannah, if you'd like to tell us about really literacy.
All right, I brought notes so I wouldn't forget things and then I wouldn't get off track.
Do I hit the middle button?
Yep.
All right, well, um, I'm Hannah Erian Frey. Those of you who maybe know me already have probably thought of me as a third grade teacher, um, which I just finished my ninth year in the district in third grade, but now I am our district literacy coach, because I'm really, really excited to be. And so when I was thinking about, how's it going? I probably hit it already. Um, when I think about like the things I'd like to come and share with you, there were three things that came to mind. So I'm going to talk a little bit about, um, our letters training, and then a little bit about our new phonics curriculum that we have in over Kelly, and then about, um, MTSS in our, in our building for now. All right, it's working. So I am also our district's letters facilitator, um, which means that I've gone through the training to be the person who trains other people in letters. Letters stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling, and it is just professional development for teachers on best practices for teaching, reading, and writing and spelling, and how our brain learns to read and write. Um, it is very much informed by the science of reading and aligned to structured literacy, and those might be buzzwords that you've heard, like floating around in education lately, and this, I thought I'd just share the difference between the two. The science of reading is, um, the research base that informs best practices for reading. So when you hear that term "science of reading," you should be thinking about research studies. That's what it speaks to. Um, it's really the why for what we do, like why we do things certain ways. Structured literacy, on the other hand, is the approach to instruction that is informed by the research. So it is more of the what and the how. So the content that we're teaching and the delivery method of instruction. So, um, when you hear structured literacy, you should be thinking about what's the content, what's the instruction look like? So, science of reading is the why, structured literacy is the what and the how. So that's the, that's the difference between those two terms. They get used interchangeably quite a bit. Letters.
I can click for it.
Okay. Let's just do that, so I don't mess it up. Um. In our district, we started letters in the summer of twenty twenty-two, um, which I have to thank Kathy for because I came to her after doing the training myself. And so can we please do this for everybody? Can I please be the trainer? And then she trusted me and saw the value, and it's sort of taken off from there. So we did start, um, about two summers ago, and at this point, we have fifty-three teachers across Kelly, Lindtown, and the middle school, who, current teachers that are still here, who have either started letters or, or are finished with letters. So of that fifty-three, thirty-one teachers have finished letters training, which is pretty time intensive. So that's a, a really cool commitment. Um, and then I just have some other stats to share. So all of our classroom teachers and all of our learning support teachers at Kelly are either in letters training or finished with letters training. Most classroom teachers and all of the learning support teachers at Lindtown are either in or finished with letters training. And I have to give sort of that, like, most teachers, because we do have some fifth grade teachers who focus on math, and that's, um, letters isn't maybe what they need for that. Um, and then all of our reading specialists across Kelly and Lindtown are finished with letters training, so they're fully letters trained, which is cool. Would you click for me? So one of the big takeaways from letters training is that we want to pair that knowledge that we gained from letters with really strong phonics instruction at our young, um, grade levels. And so what we've done this year is adopted some new curriculum at Kelly. So we have in kindergarten and first grade our ninety-five percent core phonics curriculum. You can see pictures of that on the left of the slides. And then second grade jumped on board with third, fourth, and fifth to do Logic of English, their Essentials curriculum. So now we have second, third, fourth, and fifth all teaching that same curriculum. And that's the one you can see over on the right of the slides there. Both of these curriculums are allowing us to focus thirty minutes of our ninety-minute ELA block on really solid phonics foundational instruction. So it's really explicit and systematic, and it sets that awesome foundation that kids need for literacy success. So I'm really excited about kind of our, our K-five, uh, phonics spelling curriculum now. Um, I thought of a few things that as parents you might notice your kiddos doing with some of this new curriculum. So you'll, you'll find that they really are focused a lot on how our English language works and what's going on with, like, how sounds and spelling work. So you might hear, if you have kids that are in the district or anyone else who is listening, you might hear kids doing things like tapping out phonemes or speech sounds in words. So that might look like "k" at "cat." Just hear all the sounds. Um, you might hear kids talking about what their mouth is doing when they produce different sounds and the voicing that they feel in their vocal cords. Uh, those things are called articulatory gestures. And it's things like, um, thinking about what your mouth is doing with two sounds that are similar. So you have "t" for T, "d" for D. And the only difference between those two speech sounds is that your vocal cords are on or off. So if I go "t," "d," "t," "d," my mouth is doing exactly the same thing, but the difference is in my, my vocal cords. And I won't make you try it, but you can if you want. It's kind of cool. Um, you might also hear your kids talking about different phonograms or the letter and letter combinations that we use to spell different sounds. For example, the CH, that CH can be spelled or can represent three different sounds. So it can be "ch" in cheese, it can be "sh" in chef, and it could be "k" in school. So kind of a neat way to think about it. You may also hear your kiddos talking about spelling rules that are unique to English, things like, um, Q is always followed by the letter U in English words, and English words do not end in I, U, V, or J. And if you can think of an exception, it's probably a word we stole from another language. Um, and then finally, you may hear kiddos using morphology or morphemes, which are the meaningful parts of words in order to sort of figure out what new words mean. So if they know that the root word "struck" means to pull, then they can figure out that words like, or sorry, tracked. Tracked means to pull. Struck is a different one. Um, that "contract" means to pull in, and "extract" means to pull out, and they can use that knowledge to, to learn new words. So that's some of the cool things that our kids will be like really, really good at, at young ages, that will sort of blow our adult minds. I'm ready. Um, and then last, I wanted to share kind of alongside the knowledge that comes with letters and our new curriculum, um, that really pairs well with that, we are also focusing on an MTSS framework at Kelly this year to support all of our students. Um, and we're, our focus really is on literacy for this. So MTSS stands for Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, and it is often represented by this triangle that you see here. So the different tiers of the system sort of represent the different levels of support that kids need within our programming. And so my, the best way to explain this, the way that I like the most, is that we're always, our end goal is always that ninety-five percent or more of our students are going to meet grade level expectations. It's a lofty goal, but it's important to have, like, goals like that. And then MTSS tells us statistically that about eighty percent or more of our students will reach that end goal just through core tier-one instruction. So just through the curriculum that everybody is getting in class, things like our new ninety-five percent core and our Logic of English curriculum. About fifteen percent of our students are going to need targeted intervention in order to reach those end goals, and that's what we're providing through our MTSS model when we talk about our walk to intervention and our win time during the day. And then about five percent of students are going to need really intensive interventions in order to meet those goals, and that's where they might have additional time with learning support teachers or, um, reading specialists, um, and things like that. Now, that, that top tier is not necessarily our special education students. It's, they could be in any of the tiers, our students who are identified for special education services, but that just speaks to the amount of support that students will need to get to those end goals. One more slide. And then, so right now at Kelly, we're kind of in the thick of this process of really using MTSS to be intentional about the support we provide to students. So we're using universal screening assessments to predict which students are going to need extra support. We use, um, the Pearl Assessment is new in kindergarten this year, and at Cadence, we do K-five. And then students, we're taking that data and putting students into a shared spreadsheet based on their, like, lowest level of literacy need. And then classroom teachers, reading specialists, learning support teachers are taking groups so that for forty-five minutes every day, they can provide really targeted intervention to a group of students, like exactly what that group needs for success. Um, and then during that forty-five minute block, it's called a walk to intervention model because the kids actually leave and go to the group where they need to, to go for their support. Um, within the next few weeks, we'll actually be starting some progress monitoring, sorry, so that we, um, can look at how successful the interventions are working and, and make, move kids around as needed because it's a very flexible process and helps to make sure our kids are getting what they need every day. So, I know I just talked really fast, but thank you for giving me some time to speak, um, and thank you for supporting teachers the way that you do. That's all I have.
Anybody have any questions? Ethan, what your typical day looks like?
Me, as a literacy coach.
Classroom teachers, kind of, yeah, but they are all day.
Um, I wish I had, like, one good answer for that. It's been a little wild, like, sort of making a schedule. So the beginning of the year was very busy with assessments, and like, we were able to work across Kelly and Lindtown to do sort of like SWAT team style where we could, like, Michelle Rosenberg came over and helped at Kelly, and we went over and helped at Lindtown. Um, so the beginning of the year was very busy with that. Now it's, we're running data meetings and getting our intervention groups up, so I'm spending a lot of time with classroom teachers, helping them look at data and group kids, and then make decisions about, like, which intervention is the best for this group of kids, or what will we do for our sort of on-level and extension-type kiddos during that time as well. So that's been keeping me busy. And then I do get to work with some kindergarten groups, which are, like, delightful. So I do spend time doing that too.
Amazing. Yeah.
Listen, no, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a.
Yeah.
And, uh, for the assessment piece, one of the things that was somewhat confounding to me was that there seemed to be some weight to, uh, the speed at which it's a reading. Can you kind of give me an idea for where the science is with that, why that's important or isn't important, and?
Yeah, it's, I mean, there's, when we're talking about the, like, the screening assessments for Cadence, they are one, most of them are one-minute timed measures. Um, and the goal of those assessments is just to help us sort of identify students that might be at risk. So it's almost like waving a red flag, like, make sure you look closer at this kiddo.
Yeah.
Um, and then if we give them any other assessments, like, for example, a student who didn't read a certain number of minutes or a certain number of words in a minute, we might give them a phonics screening assessment to see, like, how well they can read certain words.
Yeah.
That's not timed, and that's done slower to sort of figure out where they're at with their skills.
Okay.
Um, so sometime, we do, we do have kids where we think this was just rushed for that. It was hard for them to do it that fast.
Yeah.
But it's helpful to get us sort of pointed in the right direction. So there are, there are, like, national norms for how many words a kid should read in a minute to be considered kind of where they should be. Um, and they're not terribly fast, like in, the third grade number sticks in my head. We want our kids reading a hundred words correct by the, in one minute by the end of third grade, and that's not racing. That's like, slow enough that you have good expression.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like it's usually a measure of, like, fluency, right? This idea that, like, I, I don't just, like, read a word, then another word. It's like, oh, I'm pulling it all together.
Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
All right, our next item is the, uh, Native Creations Landscape Proposal that we heard about last time, and I think, um, Kathy, do you have the lawnmower up thing you want to tell us?
Well, I, I will tell you that what I did with the proposal as it was written was I simply talked to some individuals, um, to Mr. Papa Wiz, uh, from the administrative end of things, and then from Brian Root here as the head custodian. And they raised some really good questions, sent those questions off to Alex and the company that's involved with the grant, uh, for their answers. And, um, I think we're in working solution for what we're doing. There's some concern raised for height of grass and when mowing would occur, what it would look like during that rough growing stage, and even whether or not all the areas in the grant uh, application should be planted at one time, or possibly working in some of the areas and then adding more areas. I think we are okay with the idea of starting down this road.
Don't you hear a motion to approve?
Oh, no.
Lou Benesinos?
Second.
And Miss Kraus? Any further discussion? Dr. Jawanski?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Mads?
Yes.
Mr. Fetter?
Yes.
Dr. Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Grant?
Yeah.
Ms. Hamos?
Yes.
Motion, Mary. Our next item is to appoint an alumni association liaison, and I'm happy to say that Mr. Besser is willing to be nominated. Uh, so do I hear, uh, a motion to nominate Mr. Besser for the appointment? Okay, we got you. We got Justin the second. And would you like to accept the nomination?
Oh, it's something.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you, I have to close that. All right.
All right.
All right, same, reversing our first and seconds over there. I'll give Paula a chance to write for a second. Well, good. All right. Um, actually, we can just do this. All in favor of appointing Jordan, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Wonderful, thank you so much for doing this. It is unfortunate they meet the same night that we do, but you can catch up with them as you are able. All right, our next item is the PSBA, uh, slated candidate selection, so we just have to simply move as a board to affirm. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
She'll move.
Thanks for us. Second by Dr. Grant. There's nothing really to discuss, uh, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. Is there anything else we need to do for that? Form to fill, you do that. Our next item is a policy about, um, well, again, kind of data security. So this is a more or less required one, right?
It is. It is. It's straightforward, uh, from the protocol that's outlined by PSBA. It's also very important from the insurance indemnity angle of things. Um, so we worked simply through the policy committee to say, yeah, we understand it and will comply.
Uh, do I hear a motion to approve? So Lou Benesinos, second by Dr. Grant. And?
Did we not, was there no policy in place prior?
Uh, this strengthens wording in it, adds additional legal citations. It's a revised one. Yes, good question.
I think a long time ago, it was like there was a cybersecurity, this, there've been variations of this over time, right? It's growing. It's a growing body of policing. All right, um, this is just for first reading. All in favor can say aye. Kind of, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll see that in better of future, uh, consent agenda. Our next item looks exciting. The band wants to go to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee. Can you tell us a little bit about this?
I can. I'm excited that it's the band and the orchestra and the choir that would be taking the trip. Uh, it is information for you. It is, if I remember, in March.
May, April, April.
April.
With, with spring holiday, yes, with spring holiday. Um, they've set a very aggressive effort to do some fundraising and to raise some costs. And, um, it's always great when our students have travel opportunity. Um, so this is their proposal for their department trip. And it is just that information.
I have one question.
Please ask.
They're planning on doing an eleven-hour trip home overnight, right? I think, I thought I saw that. Uh, I, my question would be, my guess would be there would have to be multiple bus drivers to do that.
They're going to try that off.
Right. But there would still have to be multiple bus drivers. I would hope.
I would hopefully.
Okay, just maybe make sure.
Absolutely.
Typically, the bus companies will provide bands with drivers behind, like, they'll meet at a.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure that's the case.
I hope that. That's what I would assume.
It's like the driver rides along.
Good to raise the question.
Otherwise, it looks not. Thought about being a chap.
The, the next item here is our sick leave bank report. There's been some needle and thread plan. There's still a lot of participation. Everything is very good. Okay.
Yes, uh, you have the report, and yes, there are days in the beginning balance. We did have one, uh, staff member make use and then not need all days requested, so we've been overturned to the sick bank, um, of unused sick days. And so the ending balance is a healthy balance at the close of last academic year, and two hundred and eight of our, uh, faculty and staff participate. You have that report there in front of you.
We have one new item for financial competency. It is currently just, um, an information item, but it's, yeah, we can just leave it as an information. I don't have to move this one. We buy copies of all of them.
I don't need it right now. It's fine. Either way, either way is fine, but yeah, it's well booked. It's a new book, uh, kicking out this year, uh, using it in kindergarten, um, financial literacy.
All right, so for this evening, I think what we're going to, my board presence report is going to be very brief because we're going to move into a work session after the main part of the meeting. But it would be good to sort of reemphasize, we're going to take the first meeting of the month, have the reports, and take the second meeting of the month. And what we'll be doing over the course of the year is now revisiting, uh, topics within the comprehensive plan. And so over the working sessions, we talk this, and we all talk at the planning meeting. We'll just take a chunk and say, what are we doing in this space? What does that look like? For example, in communication, we have this fantastic new website. It'd be nice to sort of, when, when good things like that happen, to have the whole board be informed as the highlights. Or when we address, just pick one other of the items in our comprehensive plan, just to give sort of progress updates on those. And so hoping that the rest of the board is amenable to that plan so that we keep track of what we plan to do and do it. Okay, that's all I've got for us for right now. Kathy, what would you like to talk about?
I would. All right. I don't sing, but it is a wonderful, uh, time of the year. Uh, we've had our first full month of school realized in our academic year. We've welcomed nineteen hundred students to our four buildings, or to SUN, or to Early College, or East School, or our traditional classrooms. We've put the routines in place, the expectations, and early communications with our families and students. We've put our school world in order, if you will. We've enjoyed the annual rituals that begin each school year here, grade orientations, transitions to new buildings, and open house events that always bring home and school together in support of our students. We have welcomed lots of parents in to visit and see our classrooms and learning spaces. With the exception of the last three days, we have enjoyed wonderful weather, and that has allowed us to do a lot of outdoor learning, opportunities to blend extra recess time into our days, and lots of sunny days that generally make everyone feel good. We have also been fortunate to have the good weather to allow our physical field and facility enhancements to be completed. The road is constructed, the tennis court is in place, the middle school football and soccer field is seeded, and the Pauling Turfield project is underway. These are large commitments of resources and energies, and it's awesome to see and enjoy some of these facilities, as well as an enhanced parking lot in the Dragon's Den. It has been marvelous for fall sports to date. Eleven teams take to the fields and courts, and more than three hundred student athletes compete and play. And finally, I'll add that while September closes, the school year moves quickly forward. We'll be in the second half of the first marking period, which will come to an end on October twenty-fifth. We'll be concluding some sports seasons and getting ready to open the next seasons for our teams. We will assist the PSA in holding a dragon dash in our elementary buildings on October seventeenth. We'll continue to rehearse the fall plays at both the middle school and high school, and they have November performances. The choir, chorus, band, and orchestra will continue to practice and will hold out hope to have great fall weather and enjoy the season to come. Good?
Thank you. All right, well, Joe, let's hear about the CSIU.
Okay, uh, three main things. Uh, you see the CSIU board reporters there in the minutes. It was a Lewisburg heavy night at my first meeting in the CSIU. Um, and I was approved as a member of their board, but also, um, Mariah Drexler, uh, Lewisburg student who attended Pennsylvania. Uh, Lewisburg student who attended Pennsylvania Governor's School for the Sciences, uh, was invited to come and give a presentation on her experience there. Um, Mrs. Weaver was there as well to introduce her, uh, and so this was, you know, phenomenal. Uh, and everybody was, uh, you know, very happy to see her there and happy to support, you know, the, what the district did, uh, for long to that, that experience. So, um, so that was great. Um, I, I'm not clear yet on whether you get all the communications from CSIU that I do as well, so, okay, if not, there's two dates to be aware of. Um, on October fourteenth, uh, they're calling it Regional and Service Day. Uh, so at Susquehanna University, um, there's, uh, something of, uh, a day titled Kids Deserve It. Uh, with two keynote speakers and then twenty breakout sessions and staff and board members from all of these person, CSIU are invited to go there. Um, on the same day, uh, there'll be other events going on like PMEA, the, the Music Educators Association will be having a professional development day as well. Uh, in other locations, um, so that's to be aware of, uh, and I can make sure that the. Find details out to whoever needs them, if they don't have them already. Um, and then second of all, there's specifically school board development training going on on Wednesday, October thirtieth, uh, the evening. Uh, five thirty to seven thirty, um, so not just CSIU board members, but any board member from the seventeen districts are invited, uh, as that. There's a dinner at five thirty, uh, to search chance to, to network, uh, and then I think the topic for the evening will be, uh, governance. So they're having, uh, a speaker from a, a legal firm to, to talk about certain legal aspects of governance. And also the intended for board members, process works to share with each other. Uh, the RSVP for that, I believe is October sixteenth, if I'm not mistaken, and again, I can make sure that info gets pushed out to anybody who'd like.
Thank you, that sounds excellent, and I think, well Kathy and Paula always get, you know, notifications about that stuff, right? So, yeah, the governance, um, that Wednesday night sounds, sounds like a good event. And, uh, for folks who didn't know, Mariah had done a girls in STEM night that went really well, I don't know if anyone else knew of someone who had participated. That was, it was very nice event to do, it was, I think Mr. Jordan facilitated as well. Next up is the consent agenda. Now, so I'll take a motion to approve. Go on, move by Natanas. Second. Let him adopt a grant. Alright. Mrs. Press?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Mattis?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Dr. Graham?
Yes.
Dr. Brinkett?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Dr. Twarren?
Yes.
Motion heard, thank you. So, Erin, you're up, if you're ready, we're on citizens comments, the board on non-adventure items.
Alright, hello everyone, um, I wanted to come today as a, a student in the district to talk a little bit about a really. Special meeting, Mrs. Moser and I had on Tuesday this week, um, I know when I, uh. Interviewed for the appointment for the, uh, vacancy, as well as when I was here a couple of weeks ago to talk about student government. I brought up the idea of having a student representative to our school board as a sustainable position that one student each year would fulfill to help provide feedback to the board. And just overall offer the student perspective, I know that's something that a lot of you had commented on when I did interview, that that was something that you felt might be needed for the school board. Um, so Mrs. Moser and I had a great discussion on Tuesday about this. Um, it is important to note too, I know you should initially brought up the idea of me being a alumni association representative. We actually do have someone from student council serving in that, um, capacity, so I wanted to make sure that was clear. Um, but also just thinking about adding a student representative position to, um, the board, probably serving in this second meeting of the month. That does have the more discussion based, um, part of the agenda. Um, and it can be added as far as legacy plan goes to either the student council constitution, which is pretty easily amended by the student council. Or even incorporated into the board's policies, there are many models of this, um. I especially like the one for, uh, Parkland School District in Allentown, and I actually know the person serving as the student rep there right now. So, you know, I'm definitely gonna be consulting with her about this to see what her experience has been like. Um, but overall, just wanted to bring this to the attention of the board and, you know, thank you for your support so far on this idea, I know I've been conversing with you guys a little bit. Um, and just ask that, you know, you. Uh, help facilitate, you know, this idea more and help me move forward with hopefully making this happen. Uh, in the long term, you know, I'm not entirely sure how that'll work out, but like I said, there's lots of models of this happening super successfully in other districts. And I really hope this is something that we can, um, add, hopefully this year with myself starting as the initial person and then helping to pass it down to someone else next year.
Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, would you actually be willing to share, you mentioned your friend in Allentown or?
Parkland, yeah.
And Parkland, if they have a policy or like anything you've learned about that?
Yeah, so I actually have the policy up here and I've been, be more than happy to send this to Mrs. Moser or others. Yeah, yeah, so essentially it is within their policies, um, just regarding, uh, like local board procedures under affection called student representative. Um, and essentially, it has the description pretty much what we're looking for potentially, which is. Um, you know, providing communication between the board and student body, um, making sure the board is aware of student views regarding the issues and policies that we are affected by. And also working with the members of the board to provide quality education for the students of the district. So they have special eligibility, um, which is, you know, good moral character, um, sixteen years of age or older, which, you know, is kind of. Depending on what we want to do, I would think maybe a senior would be a good option for this. Um, someone who's been a resident of Parkland School District in this case for at least one year, um, you know, kind of general requirements like that. They have a selection procedure outlined where the school, the high school will advertise in the student body that they are seeking applicants to the position. Um, and then they will do a written application and submit it to, uh, here it says the building principal, this could also be someone on the board. It'll be reviewed by a committee of, uh, I guess it says here, high school personnel, but you could also do that as well. And then, um, it says by June fifteenth of each year, they select one student to serve the representative for the next school year. Um, and then their responsibilities are to be a non-voting participant on the board, which is exactly what I think we should have here. Um, they are not required to attend workshop sessions or executive sessions unless invited by the board. Um, they're expected to learn and follow the procedures outlined in the Robert's Rules of Order, um. Yeah, and so their participation is limited to the time the board is in session. So essentially, offering feedback on what's being talked about on. So, yeah, and it's just for one school year, um, September through June, and you would do applications for the student body. So that's, that's the policy that I think works quite well for that district, and I've heard from, you know, both the current person and also previous people that it's been a constructive addition.
Well, thank you, thank you for researching that. Do you know if they report any of their board meetings, because that would be trying to, would have seen how that.
Yeah, um, I can actually, I will get in touch with my friend, um. She and I were actually both finalists for the state Board of Ed Student Rep a couple of years ago, and that's how we met. Um, and so I will get in contact with her and see if I can get some of that information for you guys instead of tips.
Thank you.
I just wanna make clear that I'm away all zepher, and we are better rivals.
Can you, should you like?
Well, we'll see if they have a good step before that. Alright.
So, next up, uh, it's director's comments, but this just ends this part of the board meeting to go into the working session, so, um. We do have a chance to talk in a minute, but if you have anything you'd like to share, we'll start with Joe. Okay.
I'm good.
I'm good. I'm good.
Great job, T, uh, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Move by Natanas. Take one of his lines. Uh, all in favor say aye. Alright, so we are going to adjourn, we have part of the meeting, and we're gonna move over to the, um. You go back in the meetings and you go over to the public work session, you can go back and get the agenda for this. And so, the first. I want to order the public work session of this evening's, uh, for the board meeting. So, the first thing we're gonna talk about is the principles for governance and leadership, and there's a handout here from the PSBA, which has a nice. Sort of delineation of, of what our expectations are as board members, and it's nice to have this in front of us. And Cory and I were reminded as we were sitting with Joe going through his orientation that, you know, some time can go by before we look at these again. I mean, unless you're pulling out your binder for inability to sleep, but, uh, it's really good to just revisit these concepts every once in a while. And, um, you know, maybe make a practice of, of thinking about, for example. Um, what I think we just did very well, planned thoughtfully. So, we, you know, Vince took into account a bunch of different voices to prepare a comprehensive plan. Those set goals for us that we're going to revisit in future, uh, work sessions. And then we, our biggest responsibility is to allocate resources. And so that, like just in that one banner area of plan thoughtfully, I think this board has done very well. We have a whole district goal of communicating clearly, timely, you know, in a. Uh, in multiple venues, so people can catch that information, and I think that's, that's what this is, right? We're going to be, we talk about the culture here of having open dialogue among the staff, among our board first. And then we also talk to the staff and stay in touch with everyone we know in the community. Always seeking input from stakeholders, student stakeholders very much included in that range of, of our stakeholders. We listen, we've heard from parents, especially when we're talking about the special education cases. And so, um, I think that we do espouse these, these values and we, we practice these principles. It's just nice to have them in front of us, and so. To remind ourselves every once in a while, so as we go through this year and we talk about comprehensive planning and other things the board may wanna do in lieu of a retreat. We'll kind of revisit this, because the retreat used to be kind of like a reminder of things you should remember from your binder. Reminder that there's trainings out there available to you on the PSBA login, if you've been there recently. Uh, do, does everyone get the emails from PSBA, the, the update emails? There used to be a position on the board that was like a policy liaison or something, remember, um, Ange Kiplo was the last person I could think of that did it. But then every, that was from a time before, you know, now that we all get emails, we probably don't talk about the emails that we receive. But if something comes through on a PSBA email that you're interested in, we can talk about it in a work session. Okay. Does anybody have any ideas for a topical thing that sort of goes along with governance? That we all excited about going on October thirtieth?
Oh, no, that was interesting.
It does, right? Okay. Our next thing though is real work, we have to look at the board committees. So, right now, we have, um. A few places where we need to replace Mary Ann's role and also just ask folks if they want to do something slightly different. So, on policy right now, we have Heather and Kristen, is that still working and good, alright, fantastic. Act ninety-three is myself and Cory and it was Mary Ann, is there anyone interested? Act ninety-three is the labor group that includes the principals, um, you know, special education, Delbert's position. Athletic director, depending on what happens at that. Uh, is anyone interested in serving on that, and we don't need to do it even this year, so this is a.
I can hear him.
Okay. As a deferred responsibility, it's not, it won't come up for a while. What we'll do is we'll take notes tonight and we can affirm our, uh, selections and discussion at our follow-up meeting, which is what we usually do. We sort of pass the, the whole slate. On gift review. Is there anyone in particular that would be interested in doing that again? Is anybody else interested, or is that okay? Kristen, now that you've done it once, do you wanna describe for everyone color works?
Um, well. I don't, I assume they always come from GDF, right, do we ever get one that's not GDF? Would there be?
Have we did again? I don't think it's only GDF, isn't it?
It, it is.
It's pretty much only GDF, yeah.
Was put in place once the foundation began to, uh, raise funds and, and promote that for us.
And so when GDS has.
Simply accept sometimes other private donors gifts.
Yeah, and sometimes we get things in times, right, instruments donated and that sort of thing.
But this has this layer of a three-member panel including them. So that they can move.
And it's just making sure that GDF is all the, kind of been acting as the district and accepting funds, isn't agreeing to something. That the district wouldn't like.
Right, exactly. Or that any, any objectionable sort of donor.
Language or anything like that.
So Jordan, you've been doing labor relations for a while, you have the most experience, do you wanna describe just what that is in case anyone's interested in swapping, although, I mean, that seems pretty well intact?
Um, just depends on which labor group, but, um, typically our solicitors here, um. Yeah, just sitting down, again, depending on the labor group, having those conversations, sitting at the table with them and, uh, trying to figure out some of the contracts.
Is now only, it's just the teachers, I don't have a non-hire support staff, is that the only two? No.
Yeah, exactly, it's very different, so, yeah.
Yeah, alright. And you're good at staying, cool, thank you. I go to the Green Dragon Foundation meetings, we have a whole GDF meeting that once a month. We have a leadership meeting approximately once a month, it feels like. I get called into other meetings and events. Seems fine, okay. Cory makes sense to continue doing safety, I think he wants to continue doing that, yeah, great. And then, because we just concluded our comprehensive plan, do we wanna retain this year or hold off and reform it at the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, it's every three years, um, we're already talking about it at, at every other meeting potentially, so. You know, necessarily need one right at the moment, but.
Does anyone see any issue with dissolving it and reforming it when needed? Alright, I'm gonna skip over government, uh, relations, I'm happy that Jordan has taken on, um, alumni, thank you. Okay. Equity and inclusion, this has not met for a long time, it ended up being a very. I'll just share my experience when, when we were trying to get it together. There were many different interest areas, and so teachers had a perspective on some of the things that they would like to do that were tied to curricular pieces. The PSA did a really cool thing, they funded a book series and maybe a, um, an assembly or something, a couple of those. And then, there were parents, and in the parent sort of interest groups, there were a couple of pieces, one was about minoritized attributes of individuals. Some conversations were around any sort of lingering. We'll say like achievement or performance disparities in, um, different subpopulations of students. And then there was kind of a smattering of other interest areas, and it was really hard to bring it together. We have a whole district commitment to equity and inclusion. When you have a committee, it necessarily excludes people from being a part of the conversation. So, uh, I don't know, Heather, actually, have you had a chance at all to talk with any of the teachers who were doing anything in this space?
Not in a long time.
Not in a long time, right? So, I'll, I'll take anybody's proposal for how to keep our equity and inclusion efforts going forward without having a committee that. Unfortunately, because not everyone can meet at the same time, it never ends up inadvertently excluding people.
You like having served on the steering committee, I think equity was some, and inclusion both came up a lot. And so to me, that would be sort of a natural progression is something to take from that effort. To kind of say, hey, like this is, these are the things that we said are important, like, what does that look like? And to me, it does make sense to have sort of a few people in that room instead of, we can't have everyone, right? Like to make any sort of progress. Um, that's like, yeah, I don't know, what does that look like practically, like who should be in that room? Like to me, like a social worker.
Right, right, which actually the social worker, I don't think had attended, no, we don't have any district social workers. So, is there an opportunity here, because we now have these discussion-based committees of the whole? But we could have a recurring, like every third one of these, so once a quarter, we would get an update on the aspects of our comprehensive plan. That were tied to our equity and inclusive excellence goals, and the public would know, this is gonna be, you know, discussed. As part of a comprehensive plan update once a quarter, and then anybody who was interested would be able to participate and no one. No one would feel like, oh, you know, I couldn't make the meeting.
At the board discussion.
At this, at this.
Yeah.
Right?
I think that would make sense, and I think, I mean, we get so many people come, but, um.
Someone's watching this, but poor Vince set it up for nothing.
I know.
Retorting.
Um, but, yeah, I think it could be a good place to say, hey, like, do you have equity and inclusion concerns, like bring that up, I was like.
Oh, like solicit, yes, we could proactively solicit feedback for our committee the whole time.
For that quarterly.
Right.
Is there a, uh, committee within the district?
There was.
Yeah, because since I joined, there has not been any.
You know, and.
It is, I, I think I would agree, Erin, one of the things, and I think what's hard when you have a committee is. I think it's frustrating when people don't see movement on something. And so, we did have so many different like ways people want it to go, and. I think that we do a pretty good job here, I mean, not saying that it's specifically equity and inclusion. But when people have ideas with things like the Meadow Project, like that, I, I think finding a way for people to understand, like if there's something you're passionate about. Like, we would encourage that, but to have a committee where everybody's coming with their different passion projects that were not. like, we would encourage that, but to have a committee where everybody's coming with their different passion projects that we're not really making movement on, that's just causing frustration is not beneficial and like it is part of our comprehensive plan and then is there a way that we can sort of like advertise to people that if there, if you feel that there's an issue, like
Or there's something
We would be willing to get behind that to say like, what is it that we want to do, you know, if there's something you want to see, like and we could start those conversations in this type of meeting. But to have just the generalized equity inclusion, which it did balloon into like that includes so much stuff and I think it does, then you open that door to that frustration when people are like, well, I've talked about this and then nothing's happened, like because you don't have identified who's in charge, what are steps, like what are we doing, what are the action items?
The other thing that had happened is, I'm sorry, and at the time of the meeting, there was a lot of concern, not only around minority attributes of um you know, visible identity, but around some special education related issues and we knew that that special education sort of broke off and became became its own effort. That was also kind of pulling the committee, it was stretching the committee pretty far uh in terms of what, again, we couldn't it almost like you couldn't make anybody happy because it wasn't a thousand things.
But I think those things that have broken off have been successful.
Exactly.
Like, I think like the special education piece broke off and I think we've heard the families and they can't, so I think that's part of that encouragement of people understanding, like we are open to hear the things and we're open to get behind potential projects or potential initiatives. But that needs to be rooted in somebody kind of leading that and that might not be a board member added committee.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Right, because it could be potentially providing a space and they're like, hey, like, do it, like, come to the meeting, like, people had, gives them a space and the
Right, and those meetings were all on Zoom because of when those sort of tried to kick that committee off. And I think that made it a little harder to connect because some were meeting one day around a certain issue, others were meeting a different day, so I do like the idea of bringing people in person.
Yeah, so in the effort to try to capture as many people as possible to participate, we did stop the meeting, I forgot about that and then people are like, well, I didn't come there for that one, Jordan, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I was just gonna say, just some historical aspect here. Um, in the past, we had a extracurriculars committee and I believe communication committee and a couple of other committees that we've kind of dissolved. Um, without a very clear and concise charge, it's really easy, um, it was very early, maybe my first year on the board. Uh, the extracurricular committee, we went in really without a clear charge and it just became a disaster of a meeting and um, so I would, I would fully um appreciate that, um, you know, or on the flip side, if we want to keep this, I would say that we should have a very definitive charge of what that committee is doing, where, the direction of that committee, but I would be very much in favor of just doing it as a committee of the whole, especially if we're shifting. You know, the board to, you know, more, there's a couple of board sessions, so.
So then if we talk about a time that could I think we already have a a topical thing for October and it's crazy, we only have one meeting in November and one meeting in December. So we were talking about January and that actually might be a great amount of time to allow people to give us feedback to to allow us to pull through some of the things that are in the comprehensive plan. And really with the new year, we're gonna start this model where we're visiting the comprehensive plan, we're taking feedback, like we can communicate that out to the public. So does the second meeting in January seem like a good first time that we do that sort of quarterly equity and inclusion update? That's related to our comprehensive plan efforts and any parents and community concerns. And then we'll see how frequently it makes sense based on what we hear then.
Hmm, yeah.
Alright, um, do you feel like that was the right amount of nervous, you know?
I guess my other question, who's giving the update? I mean administrators.
I think it's coming from Kathy Fitz mostly and also because we will look at data, because we have the test data, we have some of the other indicators, right? We had some socioeconomic status data that we used to look at, we had the pre-K data. We looked at like pre, pre-K uh class composition, some stuff like that.
Do, do we have an easy, so if we sort of put that call out there, is there an easy way for people to be able to provide that feedback? Is there a place on the website where they can go and click the link and fill out a form that?
There's a spot now for school board comments that, we didn't have any tonight, but we could also make an additional form for this specifically with a, you know, board meeting coming up with a focus of equity and inclusion. Um, if you have any feedback to share specifically this, um, with that link to it, so yeah, we could definitely arrange that pretty easily.
And I think that's a good call to put out, if you say the date that will be discussed is that the meeting in January, put it out almost any time from now. Once we, you know, kind of look at the language of the call to make sure it's sensitive and appropriate. Do we feel like that's settled for just a minute? Okay, I'll give something a try, give something a try. Wellness? You still going?
Yep.
Kristen, you're on a lot of committees, I thank you for your time.
No, just, I mean, just wellness and policy and then the gift review thing is like kind of just Don't we talk to all on two? Isn't everybody on two committees?
Yeah, I think I just got my four.
I don't want to boot anybody off their committee that they're already on, I mean, I'm I'm C S I U now, but I'm not in any of these other committees. If someone wants a break or a rest, it's okay, by all means, but I'm not gonna be like, get out of the way, let me be on your committee.
Well, I'll tell you that.
Just in terms of numbers.
The C S I U one is, I mean, that's a commitment, that's a commitment.
Yeah, okay. Fair, fair enough, I just
Obviously, I joke with that, but I mean, there are committees like the gift review, the um alumni relations that really take very little time, yeah, because there's not much involvement. Sun and and C S I U, I would say, I mean, and Green Dragon Foundation probably takes the most amount of time, so it is a big one, even though you know, you see names on here.
Yeah.
Don't, don't uh read too much, obviously, I joked before, but that is a big responsibility and a big time commitment.
Yeah. And don't worry, we're we're about to have a committee charge that will be looking for participants, so.
Alright, fair enough.
Alright, so where we come back to is our government relations committee, we we gave it that name to hold the place and it would be advisory and the idea was to interface with government leaders first, but then also other, you know, regional leaders of institutions to talk about things that are good for the community as a whole and what we need to advocate for in the collective, rather than like the the school board saying we could do our thing and then one of the townships saying a thing of the borough or or a hospital or institution, like whatever it is. Um, but getting folks together, we don't have, do we draft a charge for that? We don't have even a drafted charge, right? Justin, did you draft a charge?
No, no, we were waiting for the comprehensive plan.
That's right.
Finished. So, so now it's finished and we can
So maybe, let's, let's create our wish list, what should this committee do?
So one thing I think, and I think it would fall under this, um is I'm pretty sure so, and I I don't know how if people off on this board have done it, I know I haven't. But typically, there's at least one day a year, if I'm not making this up for all the other things that I do, um, where you like, are like we invite board members for Harris, to Harrisburg to talk about that just later, am I making that up? And I feel like you would know that.
It's a P S B A advocacy.
Yeah, so I think like potentially like making sure we're all aware of that date, because I do think that's something that would be good as a board or as members of a board to go to, I've done things like that with other people before, it's very interesting, first of all, it's very educational, I think also something potentially I don't know if there's like students that wanted to go or whatever, but um in that regard of speaking to legislators that are there or just knocking on doors and talking to people, attending advocacy events like that, that are government related, I think could be beneficial and I don't think it's something that, at least in my time on the board, we've done.
That was part of the, Erin mentioned it briefly before, that um, do you remember what it was called, that like legislative update?
Right, right.
Liaison or like, something like that.
Stop doing it, P A Schools Works is doing a bunch of workshops and stuff, I used to attend and I attended several times. It was Mark DeRocco hosting many of them, right? There was one in Williamsport, there was one like maybe in Sundari, it's been a while. But back, back then, it was, they talked a lot about school funding, they talked a lot about infrastructure. It was, so just a ton of, there still exists, P A Schools Works still exists and they put out good information. Um, but that was, yeah, one of the roles of that, that
But then P S B A, sorry, P S B A started sending out, I think, monthly legislative updates, which really was what the person was
Yeah.
reading the email and conveying it to the board, so it seemed kind of redundant because we were all getting those. Uh, which actually I don't think they get them anymore, but
Just look at your spam.
I know, um, I used to get like fourteen a day, but uh, but I mean, to your point, that was uh, there is a uh advocacy day in Harrisburg uh through P S B A that they organize that, so.
It would be something just to keep like an eye out for and I know a lot of times those advocacy days, like the big point is to like have the same messaging, so even if the messaging is for like our district specific or what is like the state messaging we're bringing, because I know that's usually like the thing of you don't really sound like you have your stuff together if everybody's going and asking for different things from their legislators, so like making sure, so maybe just that committee knowing like what is the messaging or making sure that we take the time to discuss, like is there a messaging that from Lewisburg we want? Or what is the messaging overall, like are we following the P S B A messaging, are we not, whatever, just so that we know, because we are sort of, if we attend that, we're we're attending reflecting the board, not so much attending reflecting like a personal view or something like that.
I think after Kyle gives his update, we're, we're gonna have a very clear message if we have an advocacy day. Um, anything else?
Well, I was gonna say, I think you're right, Jordan, that we do get a lot of information, but I know for me, like we get so many emails, like I don't have time to read all of them, like I wonder if it's still worth for this committee to kind of designate them, I was like, hey, you guys like own this part and like, we all get the emails, but like you guys, if you can read it, and like make sure, like, there's things that are relevant to us, you're bringing it to all of our attention. I think I get free from like P S B A every day.
Yeah.
Now I'm thinking, I feel like I'm missing them because
I mean, I
In an annoyed state, I probably unsubscribed.
Subscribe to National School Board's emails every time and they, they don't believe me, so. So it sounds like still keeping that, you know, bringing new information, I'm willing to read at least one labor email, like I think the A Schools Works, so do you, do you still get those? Okay, so is there any other thing, we still want to talk, so that's part of talking with legislators, we still want to talk with local other folks in the community, you know, and know our, know our people, like know who's at Wellspan, know who's at, you know, who we work with or um the borough or, or we don't even have anything in the borough anymore, like at East Oakford Township or whatever, is there?
That could be like a start of the committee is, like who are these people, like and who, like of our local regi-
Yeah.
And even our local legislators, like what committees are they on, because I mean, some some committees matter more than other committees for what we're doing, like so our people on education committees are kind of committees or whatever. Um, but even like you said, like at Wellspan, at those places, like who are contacts, because I mean, the board obviously rotates, so it might be good to like have, start informing that list of these are the outreach contacts, because if maybe I'm on that committee this year, but then I'm not on the board in three years, like we would still have that list of like, oh, I'm who replaced Jamie and this is our contact.
And I think with a lot of the changes at Wellspan right now, um, it's a good time to try and because probably whoever they were before, they are now, so it's gonna be a lot of new, trying to make those new connections. Um, and I do think, I, I think I don't want to speak for the whole board, but I think the majority of us agree that there is a sense that we really need our, the larger organizations in our community to work with us on things.
Yeah.
Um, and I think if, if we can just be able to sit down at a table, now it what we think it looks like, what they think it looks like, that's what's all up in the air, right, that's but if we can just be able to sit down and have shared community interest that we can discuss and if they can help us and we can help them and it's not always gonna be monetary, like I think the focus is always on just the money, but there's so many other things that if we can, if we can work together on, um it, it just builds more community.
I agree.
I was just gonna say, what if we change it to community relation? So one of the other things that this is probably gonna be an unpopular and maybe impossible task, but um, I don't believe, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, and I believe Dr. Skalka during his time here had sent out our last um, district-wide mailer to provide an update to every resident in the district.
That's what we have in works with the publication of the comprehensive plan, which it was in
Right.
went out.
Yeah.
And that's something that I think
That'll be a great piece.
Just a good understanding for, I mean, that publication and reaching, uh, you know, many residents that don't have kids in the district, people who you know, the, the many complaints that we hear about and and, you know, about high taxes, you know, it gives an example or gives uh, gives an opportunity for us to show what we're doing and why we're doing it. Um, and then, uh, this is the unpopular idea, which publications very much solve that. In the past, we've had different, you know, open forums and uh like a community evening that sometimes can get out of hand easily, but in a very structured way, even just a slideshow coming from the administration. Uh, you know, again, many, many of the things that we do in our public meetings, but there's many people that don't know about it or just don't know to show up. Um, you know, I would maybe say that it's been a long time since we've tried anything like that. Um, I think we've tried in the past to maybe not such great success, but you know, maybe we try something like that, that this committee could possibly work on doing a, a big open house type of thing where there's a presentation given and again, in a structured manner, um.
Yeah.
Take that publication, put it in person, but again, I
I do think one of the things, it's, it's we kind of forget sometimes, there's actually people with two-year-olds right now that care a lot about what's happening in our schools and they don't have opportunities really to come into the buildings and so having an open house, not only for everyone, but those are the folks I could imagine really being like, you know, I want to get in, I want to see what, what the building's like, I want to
And I know there's been many, oh, sorry, again, I cut you off with the last one, uh, but there's been many opportunities to do tours of the new high school, but there's a lot of our community that still has not seen our building. And I mean, I hear grandparents all the time saying, I wish I could go in, I say, well, you, you, it's not off limits, it's, again, structured, but uh, you know, maybe revisiting that, because it's been a few years since we've given the public that, you know, large opportunity, so again, I know that's a big task, I'm sorry for the, sorry that administration
At like a winter basketball game or at like a wrestling match or something like that, it's probably gonna be open anyway and the school resource officers are here and a bunch of the administration, like people are here anyway. And I think basketball gets a pretty good turnout, I think, I'm not sure, but I'm just thinking in the winter, because then like
Or the matinee for the plays.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
You know, which sometimes brings a seat more senior crowd to work. Parents with little kids who don't want to do the late show.
Yeah, true.
So and it's what, what is this, is there a, is there a track, is that something you'd say?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is it a track? Yeah.
I mean, we do a lot with social media, so I don't mean to paint this as something that we don't do already, but you know, there's a lot of people that don't follow our social media pages and and they're just, I I feel like there's a lot of information out there that people are um, you know, I, again, even just some of the conversations we've had of, you know, how we're approaching funding and organizing partnerships with you know, businesses and community organizations, um, very easily that can get uh, kind of a negative spotlight shown on that, so more of the community relations rather than like, hey, that we're coming after you for money, it's just, let us explain where we're coming from, so.
I think along the same lines, when we talk about the financial stuff, I think it would be helpful for us to target some key stakeholders with that committee from the community relations perspective, to provide, you know, I'm gonna put Kyle on the spot, but to to bring Kyle and have them provide that financial overview to those folks. So that they can ask questions to of us, but also they're the folks that then that information starts to seep down to other people sort of in an, in an organic way that um, so, so that, I think that's kind of one of the pieces that I would appreciate.
I love organic message spreading, but I also like when there's print material because the telephone game is so low fidelity.
One, one hundred percent, right, no, no, right, right, we still do it here, we still record it, it's still very clear, right, no, no question.
Well, it sounds like we're, we're forming a charge, so how about if we plan to come back to our next meeting, which is October tenth with, uh, we'll have like a post-charge we can kick around and then and then at some point, we really just have to, we all know our goals at this point, we need to get the charging you know, before the end of the year, let's say. Does everyone feel pretty good about the review of the board committees or is there anything else you wanted to bring up?
Should we, should we add jokes in the community relations?
I mean, it sounded like you wanted it really badly, so.
I really think though, planning the open houses would fall under safety, so I think we should task Cory with that, so.
This is when you don't come to a meeting, you get you want to tell, okay. All right, I think that that's our our discussion of. Our sort of wishlist, I think we have a good sense of where to head with that, that was great, thank you. Let's have a financial update.
Sure, yeah, this is a sort of D, I can just, you can click and I can just. Yeah, I just put together a few quick slides, um sweep over. Just a financial update for the business office and some important dates uh to be aware of going forward. Um and then we'll cover, do you want to move the agenda, and then we'll cover some capital projects. Uh this I current and future updates here that as well. If you have any, if you have any questions during, feel free to stop me and ask, that's fine, I don't mind being stopped, um you'll just have to. Be patient with me, keep in mind that I have uh three weeks where uh John had ten years. Difference right now. But uh let's start timeline, yep, so we had our. Preliminary audit um a week ago, where they come in and they'll just pull as many things as they can, they'll take a first look. At our trial balance, our preliminary trial balance, can I give you what they need to look at, they'll grab as many samples they can and um. Do some interviews, um and then they decide they need to stay that week or come back, they this time they decided they needed to come back. They're gonna do our final audit visit up this upcoming Monday. For that visit, we'll give them our final trial balance, um so we have our final numbers, uh they'll complete all their testing that they need to do. Uh they'll do fraud reviews and all that good stuff. After this upcoming week, there'll be a short period where they are finalizing everything and. We should have our final numbers for our AFR, at least from a fund. Um financial uh standpoint for the AFR, our annual annual financial reports that we have to file. That has to be filed by October thirty first, and we should have those numbers by then. The second part of that is having our audited financial statements, which. They should have finalized completely by December thirty first, and part of the AFR is having us assigned um audited. Uh copy with that as well. The next part of that, which um isn't quite as important, is just uploading our audit statements to the municipal market access, which is sort of just um. Uh like a a holding for all the municipal bond information um for for investors and people that wanna. Look at all the outstanding municipal bond municipal bonds, fun fun stuff for them. We want to go, so then these have overlapping timelines, but then obviously we're starting to think about our budgeting timeline. We should have our Act One adjusted index soon, um supposed to be nine thirty, so these are. Estimated um timeline, estimated dates, uh because typically they'll send out. A finalized timeline with the Act One index, uh so they haven't, PD has not posted that yet. So we're still waiting on that, so these dates are just estimates, but. If we want to adopt an Act One resolution, uh that has to be done by January ninth. Um unless. We plan on doing a to plan to submit a preliminary budget instead, which is. Would have to be adopted by January twenty ninth instead of uh January ninth for the Act One resolution. If we plan to go over the Act One index, which I don't think it's been a practice in the past, and usually it takes. There's a, it's either a approval from PDE or you have to do um this. All right, it's voting. It's voter pool through the accounting board of elections or the group B, so. Um it's usually quite a process, but that would be due by February eighth, if we're doing that, and then. Uh obviously, a proposed finals to uh May thirty first to that and the final adoption uh June thirtieth. You all know those dates already.
Just a reminder, we did discuss possibly consolidating our June meetings uh for the next year's calendar. And so we'll, we always do it anyway than we would before, we never we never wait till the last minute, but so we like the mid-June time.
Mid-June, yeah, that yeah, I think the thirtieth is just the deadline, you can adopt obviously before that date. Um just, this is just a quick reminder, as we're talking about uh budget of. Our funding sources compared to some of the districts around us, um you look at ours, you hover over that, we're. At seventy-one percent local compared to the second class, which would be Central Columbia at sixty percent. These numbers are a little bit updated for twenty-two, twenty-three, I think compared to what you may have seen previously from John. Um and then the lowest being Schmuggen at twenty-two, so. Quite the difference there for where our funding sources from compared to other schools. And then.
And I don't wanna put you on this, not Kyle at all, but can you, if not, it's totally fine, but like a. Just give that a dollar amount per student, do you know like a like?
Or which?
Just so like what we, how much from the state we get per student?
Oh, I know.
No, okay, gotcha.
Yeah, sorry.
We've seen it before, I just can't remember what it was, but I know that's always like.
I can find it.
A very like, to try and like explain to people the difference between what we get to even something like Seelin's Grove. When we're able to say like, that means this many thousand dollars per student difference. Yeah, it's thousands of dollars per student, I just can't, I just wondered what the most updated was.
Yeah, I can definitely find out and send it to you. And now we need to talk a little bit about money, uh keep in mind, obviously, our audit is not finalized, these are just numbers that we've. Given to the auditors, so. Don't uh take these to the bank yet, but uh so we started twenty-three, twenty-four with the fund balance of six million. Five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, um our expenditures were roughly forty-two million eighty thousand and our revenues. Were approximately forty-three million eight hundred and fourteen, which left us with a surplus. Of around uh one million seven hundred thirty-three approximately. So good news there, uh John did a good job. Budgeting there, uh so that would leave us with uh fund balance of eight million two hundred and ninety-one, that's uh around. So a good rule of thumb for fund balances to be at least over ten percent of your revenues. Your general fund revenues for that year, that puts that eight million puts us about at nineteen percent. If we wanted to, so that six million, if we were looking to transfer. The surplus to capital projects, then if we were at six, we'd be back around sixteen percent, which is still a good place uh to be. Further well done. Um and then we are looking at.
Do you have some sense of where?
It was a windfall last year and.
Where where that came from or what's where?
Yeah, uh it looks to me that so expenditures were slightly over budget. As and then revenues were also over budget, so it's mostly from being over with revenue, which mostly came from. Earned income tax, from what I can see, and our state funding, um. Basic education funding.
We didn't know what they were gonna give us.
More than was budgeted for, yep, correct. That was mostly those two.
Okay, the four point seven is after the five million dollar transfer that we did earlier.
Yep, yep, so those fund balance numbers include the five hundred dollar transfer that was done. It was a few months ago, August, maybe the. Start in August. So. We can take those numbers into account for capital projects. Started capital projects twenty-three, twenty-four, I'm sorry, we ended twenty-three, twenty-four with three. Uh million seven hundred and two thousand and so we want to move that. To capital projects, we have uh five nine two oh two to start this year, twenty-four, twenty-five, and and pull up. This spreadsheet to talk about those projects. Some of which are in works right now.
Um that five point two million, let's say we did the transfer, we have five point two million to spend. Projects totally greater than five point two million to consider, right?
Yeah, I mean, there's over the next, the the next few years, there's lots of things to consider, but not all of them are going to. Need to be done. But yeah, we can take it, they can, we can discuss what was was mentioned so far, we can jump right into.
Yeah, we can go to the, I think most folks have seen the previous big expenditures, so the HVAC project and all that stuff.
Yeah, but this is showing also like the 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 ending balance as of twenty twenty-one, um and you can sort of see that as the year goes on. The ending balance and then also if there were any bond proceeds or S R funding that came in, or there was G D F off offsetting. Uh different things, uh grants coming in to offset that would have, that maybe came out of capital projects to start, but then. Um a grant came in or a B rate project came in, so I want to go down here kind of slowly so you can see. Um twenty-two, twenty-three, prior to Kyle and I being here, uh but these are things that happen, um that capital projects um. Helped uh or funded. I'll go through here, again, some offsetting of a band truck. Ended that year with seven million in that balance going into twenty-three, twenty-four. Again, we have some Green Dragon offset, this was um this past year, which they had a very. Uh good banner year of of offering a lot to offset some of these projects. Uh but you see some of the things that Capital Projects funded as well. Um as we go down, PCCD grant that funded a self food, self self-love booster project, so forty-five hundred of that coming out of. Capital projects. Um mats replaced in the wrestling room. Um a piece of our uh Dragon's Den project was the grinder pump installation. Um bathroom partitions, maintenance truck that happened. Um Dragon's Den, the majority of that uh landed in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. A little bit is in the the next one with a final payment. A big portion of our project that we talked about before, the tennis courts, the road, the parking lot. Um we didn't have a final walkthrough yet on that, but we're gonna be using the tennis courts um for a match uh next week. Uh and it's been in use for the last few weeks overall. Uh it's listed there, and then I with the. Fund balancing out, it it was there, we also had started some projects, uh starting. Uh at the end of the summer and in going right now, um finishing up the Dragon's Den is listed here. Um Kelly wheelchair lift replacement is something that's been approved a while ago, but having issues with getting the right permits in place and. Uh hopefully, that's gonna happen in the next month. Uh we did a large roofing project at the middle school for seven hundred thousand dollars, that didn't do the entire roof, but a good chunk of it. Uh there's still more to do at the middle school roof um in the future. Uh we did a portion of brick cleaning and some painting at the middle school, the gym hallway, you saw pictures of that at a recent board meeting. Uh we put a copy room in place and a special ed suite with some furniture, some conference room tables, um some cabinetry. Some more there to the to the ring road to finish up that project and. Polling project started a little later than we hoped, um but that has started at this point and we're hoping for. Very near completion by around Thanksgiving, and then hopefully using for the track season um in like mid-March is kind of the goal. Um we're gonna do the final surfacing once the weather is at uh appropriate temperature to do that. Field conversion took place uh over the summer, that was a project that was approved the year prior and came to fruition this summer. And ending with that balance that Kyle mentioned, and then the rest of them are things to consider, and and these aren't really any priority order. These can be shifted, these are things that we could bring to the table, um if they are in orange, they're more of a. Uh guess at what that cost might be, um if they're in white, we have probably a quote or a pretty close to a good quote. Of what that may cost, it could change uh based on uh taking it out to bid and things like that, these are more on the higher end and more conservative. Uh amounts, uh but just to kind of give some perspective of what some things may cost. Uh we talked about, uh Green Dragon Foundation has a campaign for lighting the turf field with some sound. Um they've they've hoping to raise two hundred thousand dollars, um that project um. Would most likely cost four hundred and seventy-five thousand roughly, to actually um put them up. Um but I can talk about any more in more detail if you'd like, any any that are sticking out to you that you wanna. Hear more about, we can discuss, then it's open forum.
What did you say the gold boxes were?
Uh more of a guess, uh so turf field press box uh to put at at the turf field. Um we got some pricing that could be seventy-five, we got some that could be one fifty, kind of depends on what you really want that to look like. Um how you, how you take take it to bid or your pre-bid, the prices vary a lot there. Some of the other ones, we didn't really, like the district sidewalk repairs, there are some uh our sidewalks that do need some repair. But we didn't actually have a contractor actually look at them, so it's more of a kind of just a. A more round number, yes, of what that might be, depending on how big a scope of a project that might be.
If I was looking at the number, so is there like a we have three point seven or spending with three point seven and then one point?
Three point seven, one point five, yeah, cuz we we moved one point five, we were at five, seven, uh five, two, I'm sorry, five million two oh two.
Okay, but we have like three points seven that we're kind of committed to.
So going into next year, he has paid one point five million, I think is a good way to think about it.
So like we're looking at these new projects, like, okay, that would all come out.
But if you look just at. Uh if we're doing lighting, for example, it would be. It would be inefficient for us to do the lighting as we're compelled by the M L A without doing the lighting of the parking lot and the tennis courts at the same time.
Yeah, you're gonna get, gonna make some savings with mobilization once as opposed to doing both, cuz you're bringing a crane in uh one time as opposed to twice. Yes, I I split them apart so you can kind of see, we already did put in two hundred and eighty-three thousand of putting the stanchions and some groundwork underneath. That price, if it was a full project, would have been one point two, um we chose not to do that at the time, without having the funds available to do that. Um so we, but we did some of that free work, which is gonna bring the price down, but you know, if you pass it over, you know. Many projects, it could be higher overall.
Some of the things we would really like to get sponsorship for that we talked about is, for example, having a whole health suite that was sponsored. Having a whole wellness. Uh fitness lab and fixing that up in the middle school and having that sponsored would be wonderful because. Have you visited their middle school locker rooms, have they shown this to you yet?
You can't forget it, once you see it, you can't forget it.
I gave them a tour of the building, need to go to Kelly yet, but I. No, I cannot say.
Would you recommend that what we do is we, we set ourselves some. Some goals in terms of if we can, if we can find. A certain dollar amount, like Green Dragon Foundation is a typical partner, what we're talking about, if you can find a certain dollar amount. There's things we'd like to prioritize to move forward on. I think, you know, it was a pretty compelling case when we looked at the middle school locker rooms, it was a pretty compelling case when we talked about. All the changes around and the, and if it very inefficient use of space for the Kelly um conference room and. Where the kids can have their meetings and stuff, right, so those changes make sense just to make the kids have a better experience.
Do we know where the Kelly roof is, like, is it?
Yeah, it's a little lower down here, um Kelly roof is on there, again, these are. These are guesses at what that might cost, we didn't actually get that quoted out at this time.
I guess my question is, are we having issues with the Kelly roof? And is that a more pressing project than not?
Have you?
Is Kelly one of the roofs that we got the? Uh no, that was one.
We did a grant application, which we didn't hear back yet, um to finish the middle school. That was what, two point seven, finish the middle school, I think it's on. Yeah, there it is. Um to finish the middle school, which is probably another seventy percent of the roof that we didn't do, that that would finish the job. That would be great if we got that, that's that's a. That, that would finish the job, that would be great if we got that, that's, that's a twenty-five percent match on our part with seventy-five percent being funded by the grant. Um if, if, if we got that.
Uh what's the?
Uh it could happen at any point.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Yeah.
What's the Kelly kitchen makeup area right underneath the?
This is air units, again, these are, John kind of is thinking these things when they could go potentially wrong, it's not saying they need them right now. These are some things that could be pushed. Did it again?
Is that HVAC related or?
It's like kitchen venting, I think.
I think it's with exhaust for the kitchen, yeah.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we have some other things in here, even, even the parking lot of the high school, we, we saw. You know, if we wanted to do that again, it, it would be a multi-part project, um. When Kathy and I did some, I quote uh yesterday, instead of doing a replacement, we have three locations, three potholes that you might have mentioned. Seen on your way in or way out, that we could definitely fix those for a much cheaper price. And keep our parking lot, you know, as is, uh and use that for a number of years. Uh with it just addressing kind of some of those rough areas, um that quote was more in the fifteen thousand dollar range. Just to kind of get those spots taken care of, um. And that probably wouldn't necessarily be a capital project expense, probably more of a maintenance expense that we have funds available for as well.
So, uh Vince brought great hours and was able to point some things out to us last year, you're the newest eyes. When you see this, what are your first thoughts?
Seems like there has been a good amount of spending lately, um but it also seems like. Uh like, for example, the high school is, is very nice, so it's um. It's not necessarily a bad thing, uh it's just a, it's sort of maybe a timing thing, so just something to keep in mind with. Um past spending and future spending.
So one of the things that used to come up quite a bit is, you know, how long can you defer before the, it's like not worth it to defer, defer more. Because there's other costs that you're incurred, because things that, you know, to reach a certain point or because you're spending money on repairs or whatever. And so that's something we, I think, have been keeping a closer eye on more recently because it's like you're. You know, like, like refreshing the paints and everything, some things you're like, whoa, something hasn't been done in thirty years, we painted Kelly in Lindtown. Which costs quite a bit, it's a half a million dollars, it hadn't been done in thirty years. That sounds like a lot of different maintenance, but maybe paint is paint, I don't know, so. Uh if nothing on this strikes you as like, whoa, that's weird, I wouldn't do that, uh that, that's a good. That's good for us to hear, I guess.
I think we've asked this before and sorry, I forget, the high school fob upgrade, what is that for half a million?
So, we've, we've fobbed uh three of our buildings and I said the P C C D grant that we're applying for is going to finish those buildings. So there would be, again, it's more door access and having fobs on every interior and exterior door. Um at the high school, uh when it was built, we, the fobs are on exterior doors, but they're not on classroom doors. And so it just kind of comes down to like key control, or high school teachers are using keys. The teacher does leave, it's making sure you're getting that key back and just controlling access to those. That might be a little bit of high number, but there are a lot of doors in this building, it's not a small building, um. There's receivers and wireless hubs and things that are, there's some technology that's related to it. Um but it's again, access to our buildings, it's a safety type measure. Um potentially that could be a future P C C V grant, they've been, been about every year, roughly a hundred thousand that comes in. That could offset something, for example, um.
So it's specifically interior classroom doors is basically what's.
And again, I hope we didn't get a quote for that for this building, we, we might have a quote kind of vary, but it's probably dated at this point. Um I think Albert said it's around that ballpark, but again, eh that could, I, I haven't seen that specifically. Um I've seen the one to finish the other three buildings, which is built into that grant, that won't be any out of capital projects at all. So.
I know, maybe, I think it was in the comprehensive plan, the connector was mentioned, it seems like that has to be a very, very long time away if ever, right, things, there's. Aspirational things, this, a lot of like roof things, some of this is just normal stuff we have to do, so anything.
Yeah, if you don't have a, a good roof, you're gonna have some other issues to deal with, um.
Especially those that are partially repaired. We don't wanna sit too long on something that's partially complete.
Or be calling in before we do all the HVAC, I feel like there was a Siemens charge like once a week, right, and. Or, and sometimes they'll quote about a lot of Siemens.
Well, didn't we, um. I thought like a bunch of the roofs, we like got a warrant, like we brought them up and then got warranty over that. And those were like fifteen and twenty-one, weren't they?
Yeah, we do have some good coverage right now. Well, does anybody have any other questions or things you'd like to see? I think maybe at the. Point where we're done with the audited financial statements, then we just have the update of the sort of five-year outlook and well. When do we process the transfer, about that time too, right?
Uh the transfer, yeah, should be around, I think, uh did, correct if I'm wrong, but I think John used to do the five-year outlook sort of in February.
That sounds right.
After the, closer, after you get closer to the budget numbers, uh because if you do it. Say in October, then you don't have enough the budget, right, then you're kind of estimating that too as well as of the next five pieces, so. Yeah, I think February makes a little bit more sense for forecasting, but.
And then, it's, we don't, we don't wanna spend to zero ever in our capital budget, it must be feel like our fund balance is so healthy that. Because you can use a capital expenditure as a reason that your fund balance would go down and that's. Uh an okay reason for the fund balance, the general fund balance to go down, correct? We've never done that to my knowledge, right? So it's not been our practice, we just try to like have it end the year at a, like, you know, one dollar more than the paper and into the previous year.
Right.
Um but of, of one point five million, unless we get some significant sponsorship for some of these pieces, we can do like. Three things maximum, really. And certainly not the locker rooms, like that, that kind of almost automatically has to go, it's like, I think already we could. We could all ruminate on this for two months or so, and after we do the balance or the. Transfer from the general fund into the capital fund in February, we could say, okay. The only things we can really see ourselves doing are like these three of this list that we have here between five, twenty-six. And a few things that are very necessary, right, so like um. The middle school interior painting and brick, that's not the one we already did, that's the one we were thinking about.
That would be put it, they would be painting all classrooms and hallways and the building.
And we've already put that up a summer, right, so that might be one thing where we say, look, we've been talking about this for a while. Things don't look great, is it this summer or is it next summer? Anybody have any things that they would say?
That's one that would go to bid too, so that's, that's kind of a guess, but.
Yeah, and I think some of the middle school stuff too, like not the painting and stuff, but where you're talking about the locker rooms and with some of them moving around, I mean. We've discussed before and when we talked about this before, like it all kind of builds on each other, because depending what we do with. The locker room area, which is a very large space that's not being used, would depend on then potentially like where another office could go or where another conference room could go.
Right, and we talked about maybe the trainer suite, like there's lots of options there, so. I think almost no matter what, an updated version of this pushes things like that into twenty-six, twenty-seven. Cause like there's just no financial fees.
Yeah, these, these years that are on here, it was just, these are potentially next, not all happening next year.
Right, sometime will.
Right, yeah.
Uh sometime lies.
Okay, so we'll like revisit this in February and see where we are. And also by February, we'll be halfway through the year of revenues and expenses more or less, right, we'll have a sense of what the, if, if things are healthy and. You know, there's, there were some position swaps, there were a lot of things that were unexpected this year and Pennsylvania state funding, who knows, right? So. All right, so we'll just put a pin in it until February, unless people wanna nominate things that should definitely get done.
I had a question out, the security window glass upgrades, is that across all the schools or was that specifically the middle school, because I know we had questions like we talked about.
So we, we talked about that a little, we had a vendor come in and give us a quote for um. Uh the security film on all windows four feet and under, and for all buildings, it was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I was gonna say, is that twenty-five thousand, that's amazing?
So then uh talking with our, our, our safety um. Individual that just came and spoke with us, he was saying more focus is um your front entrances. Because like back entrances have, are kind of, I got a recess, for example, are gated, it's hard to get to there anyway, the front entrances. And specifically elementary is where they're saying would be the best priority, um just because of other reasons, um. So if you just did entrances at four buildings, I'm roughly thinking that. I do a guy coming to give us a more possible quote from another company to see what that might look like, um but. It was sixty-five for all doors across four buildings, I think if we did front entrances, it would be roughly around that amount. But again, it could also be something that waits for a P C C D grant, um that comes again too.
Yeah, that's what I'm missing.
No, but I have a strange question, just because I just watched a thing on this. Do you have, do you have birds dying because they slide into our windows, is that a thing here?
We used to have, we used to have a night, we're done, I think we solved all of our animal death problems.
Can we get an update on the bird nest thing and squirrel?
My understanding is everything's fine.
It's been improved just by.
I think that's all we, next time we have a big issue, we just need another board member to retire. Take back the responsibility.
Well, can I ask that, can I ask a second, or generally, the, the problem with bird nests is like when you get a giant pan, you know, wall of. Glass, right, and then are, are there any of those?
I, I, I mean, we have large windows, but I didn't know if they were large enough.
And when you have like a library, it's like a big scenic visitor or something like that, I don't know that I need to book them to come in.
I was just shocked when I saw that, it, the, the, it kills a lot of birds.
Yeah.
And you're not hearing them there on a bird day?
Yes, I have seen it. Sorry, that was way off topic.
We had a whole meeting about squirrels and that.
Groundhog flies into the window.
Yeah.
We have different groundhog issues.
We're gonna give them a home.
I think that's it, so our action items are, we're gonna come back with a charge for the committee at the next meeting, so we can sort of approve it at the following meeting. We're gonna revisit the numbers that we talked about in February and look at like a realistic list of things we can anticipate for the summer of twenty-five. And then, um. Maybe, and we'll, and we'll put out the call for January for Equity and Inclusion, second meeting of January, please share your thoughts. And just like, it's crazy, it's only September, we're saying, we have four meetings left, first in October. I'll be here October tenth, and actually for the next three meetings, it's wild, I will be zooming on to and unable to attend one, so. That's kind of the rest of the year, it's gonna go fast. Right? Any final last words? Any further citizens, Tom? Right, we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Moved by Dr. Bennett, seconded by Dr. Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, we are adjourned, thank you very much.